Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Bedford Public Schools School Committee is called to order at 7:33 PM. It is Tuesday, October 28th. We will start with a roll call vote. Sheila.
Here.
Angel. Angel, you're muted.
I'll try this again. I'm here.
Sarah.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
I'm here. All five of us are here. We also have Kim Howell online, who is our Military Family Representative. So people filing in. We are going to start the meeting with a public comment section of the meeting. I will say before I read the statement regarding public comment, if you are attending this meeting virtually, if you could please raise your virtual hand just so we could get a list started if you wish to get public comments. But prior to the public comments statement, I wish to make a statement in advance of any public comment this evening. My name is Sarah McGinley. I'm Chair of the Bedford School Committee this year. The school committee, with Superintendent Trong's permission, has informed the community of an ongoing Title IX investigation. Our goal has been to remain transparent about the process while fully respecting the legal boundaries that govern it. To be clear, we are not soliciting public comment on the ongoing investigation. To do so could disrupt the rights and expectations of all parties involved. We recognize that members of the community may wish to share their views publicly on the contract renewal or other matters before the school committee, and we believe in their right to do so. However, this should not be interpreted as an invitation to engage in conduct or communication that is uncivil or inconsistent with the respectful standards of our community. As you are aware, the committee does not respond in real time to public comments, but we are listening. In recent weeks, the committee has also received communications urging us to disregard the legal process, address matters beyond our authority, or engage in speculation. We will not do so. Speculation and rumor only serve to divide our community and undermine trust in the process that is intended to ensure fairness for everyone involved. Again, we remind you that the committee is working with legal counsel and committed to following all applicable laws and procedures. We will not and cannot engage in public discussion that could compromise the privacy or legal rights of any individual involved. We urge all community members to remain respectful and constructive in communications with each other and with the committee as the process moves forward. Turning to public comments. As a reminder, the public is invited to comment during this part of the meeting in accordance with Bedford Public Schools policy BBDH. Please say your name and full address for the record and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Once the public comment period closes, members of the public will not be able to make comments or address questions to any speakers or members of the committee. We ask that you refrain from using the chat or Q&amp;A functions in Zoom after the public comment section has closed. Did you public comment this evening? I have a sign up list. If you'd like to add your name to the list, we'll get to you at the end of this. We're going to be taking two comments in the room, followed by two comments from virtual participants. So again, if you wish to be heard virtually, now is the right time to put up your virtual. All right. Starting off, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Marianne.
Good evening, everybody. I'm speaking tonight as the Assistant Superintendent of Schools and a member of this community who believes faithfully in fairness, professionalism, and integrity. Like many of you, I've reflected a great deal over this past week. And these are difficult times for any community, and I want to reaffirm our shared commitment to due process, respectful dialogue, and the values that define Bedford Public Schools. In the recent months, I've become increasingly concerned about the tone and conduct surrounding the discussions within our district. The work of this committee and of our schools depends on respectful dialogue and due process. When disagreement turns to rumor, division, or public campaigns, it not only harms individuals, it disrupts the essential work of educating students. Bylaw and grievance is a legitimate right. However, the process is designed to ensure fairness and confidentiality. When it moves beyond its proper channels through petitions, social media, or coordinated efforts, it erodes trust, it creates fear among staff, it confuses our parent community. This behavior is not just a leadership concern. It is disrupting the daily operations of our schools. It has created tensions among staff, it's fractured collaboration, and most importantly, it's impacting our students' experience. Many educators and administrators are now questioning whether this remains a community they can continue to serve in with pride. The effects extend beyond Bedford. The situation has drawn public attention, and colleagues from other districts have begun asking, what is going on in Bedford? This is not the reputation any of us want for our schools. It may discourage talented educators from applying here and could make it difficult to attract and retain strong leadership in the future. If concerns exist, the established process will address them fairly. But everyone in this community, staff, parents, and leaders, shares a responsibility to uphold integrity, confidentiality, and respect. When we abandon these values, we risk far more than a disagreement. We risk the foundation of trust that allows our schools to thrive. In closing, I'd just like to say, regardless of the outcomes of any investigation, the conduct that fosters unrest, public division, or disregard for the process represents a departure from the standards of leadership that our community deserves. True leadership means facing conflict with professionalism, respecting due process, and protecting the integrity of our schools and our community. I hope, as a community, we can reflect on that because our children are watching us. And the example we set right now will define what kind of district Bedford becomes.
Wendy Tanahashi Works.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Tanahashi Works, and I'm a teacher at JGMS. I have proudly served in the Bedford Public Schools for the past 18 years. I'm speaking as an individual educator and do not represent my building. I'm here tonight to express my support for Superintendent Cliff Trong in light of recent concerns raised regarding allegations of gender bias. As a female educator, I was both surprised and saddened to hear these claims. My professional experiences with Cliff have been nothing but positive. I've had the opportunity to engage with him on multiple occasions, including during Metco Advocacy Day, where we even carpooled to Boston together. In those moments and many others, Cliff consistently demonstrated sincerity, respect, and a genuine willingness to listen. When he was applying for the superintendent position, my tenacity team of students interviewed him. They posed difficult and poignant questions, and he responded to all of them with thoughtfulness, honesty, and clarity. Since then, I've spoken with him directly about serious concerns regarding school climate, including incidents of hate and antisemitism. Each time, he has responded with transparency, care, and a clear desire to find meaningful solutions. From the very beginning of his tenure, Cliff made efforts to understand our district by holding exit interviews with departing staff and meeting with educators across buildings to hear our ideas, our concerns, and our histories. He also spoke with many students across the district. His actions reflect a leader committed to building trust and inclusion. On a more personal note, I've also seen Cliff bring his values of community and standing against hate into everything he does. One moment that really stood out to me was this past September, when I happened to run into Cliff at a prayers for liberty walk, which was an event centered on peace and celebrating the common ground shared across different faiths. It was inspiring to see his genuine enthusiasm and his active involvement with the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization and his church. This demonstrated his passion and his values for fighting against hate both within and outside Bedford. His presence there and energy truly embodied the spirit of unity that this district needs and is working towards. As you consider the extension of his contract, I urge you to take into account the positive collegial and supportive relationships many of us have experienced with him. Cliff's leadership has been a valuable asset to Bedford, and it would be a great detriment to our district if we were to lose him. Finally, I'm deeply concerned about the precedent being set and how these allegations are being handled.
There's a button I supposed to put here.
You can just finish your sentence.
Particularly the public sharing of information with parents and students. This not only undermines the integrity of our schools, but could also affect our ability to attract and retain high-quality administrators and educators in the future. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. We're going to go online for the next two. We're going to start with Vivian. Vivian, we're going to want you to leave a message. Vivian, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Vivian, though, 33 Liberty Road. For those of you who may not know, I was the school representative on the school committee or the student representative on school committee last year. And I'm a current college freshman, and I'm urging to speak to you not to renew Mr. Trong's contract as I'm deeply worried about the consequences this decision this decision will have for Bedford, my friends, family, faculty, and staff. I am speaking to my own experiences. It is disheartening that this issue is the reason I reconnect with the Bedford community. I want to start by saying that during my time at Bedford, I have formed many fond memories, including school events connecting with friends and teachers and having an overall great educational experience. Bedford has historically been a place where student voice and town agency are valued and where exceptional teachers and administrators work. Collaboration and community are the hallmarks of what makes Bedford special, and I fear for the future of Bedford's educational system. I'm disappointed that there will be no student representatives bringing the voices of students to the discussions being made about their own education. But I'm so proud of all the students who have done what is right and are standing up for themselves and their peers. Speaking to my experiences during my term as student representative, I have felt the firsthand impacts of Mr. Trong's mistreatment and have witnessed the shameless misconduct of staff and faculty. I recall often feeling ignored during school committee meetings as I would spend hours every week preparing just for my opinions to be dismissed, an action that seems to be reoccurring to this day with current students. I have even seen eye rolls from Mr. Trong in response to my commentary, evidence of the blatant disregard for student voices. Experiencing this trauma as a susceptible high school student, I now worry for the well-being of current students who are trying to find their voice to make their communities a better place. The superintendent is supposed to be a role model and leader for the town, not one to engage in jarring maladministration. This behavior should not be the precedent Bedford strives to uphold. Please recognize that renewing Mr. Trong's contract would be detrimental to Bedford. A cascade of devastating faculty losses will follow suit. I urge you to weigh student and faculty input carefully in your decision as Bedford's future depends on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vina Deldar, we're going to promote you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Zina.
Zina Deldar, 6 Hayden Lane. I have already come to this committee to express my support of the superintendent. What I want to comment on tonight is my concern about fairness in the contract renewal process for the superintendent. What has been put in the public record before the school committee from detractors of the superintendent has been a lot of speculation and suspicions and minimal actual specifics on what the superintendent allegedly has said or done. The only specifics that I've read or heard prior to tonight are about overages on the school budget and a student's disappointment about how her experience wasn't valued and respected in the way she expected during an interview. However, the first example doesn't account for the fact that the finance director made clear at the last school committee meeting that the budget overages stemmed primarily from legally mandated expenditures, which means outside of the superintendent's control. The second example reminds me what many of us know to be true from experience. Job interviews are tough, they have many dynamics at play, and don't always go as expected. But importantly, an imperfect interview experience alone doesn't mean something illicit or improper occurred or that the interviewer is not fit for their role. Apart from these examples, the public complaints lack tangibles, and yet the detractors want to push the superintendent out before the formal investigation concludes. This playbook casts serious doubt on whether Bedford is a community that handles sensitive interpersonal disputes with care and due diligence and suggests instead that Bedford is a community that bases important personnel decisions on rumors and suspicions because the swirl is too much. When the investigation is finalized, regardless of outcome, I hope that Bedford through this committee reinforces that fairness, integrity, and facts prevail in our school district. Because absent these principles, we will permanently jeopardize our future ability to recruit top leaders to our district whenever that time comes. And without strong schools and leadership, families won't be buying the high-priced homes in Bedford. In short, the rumor mill has to stop for Bedford to maintain its integrity as a desirable and leading school district. And I look to this committee to set the record straight as appropriate when the time comes. Thank you.
Going back to public comment in the room. Mitch Evans on behalf of Bonnie Klein.
I am reading this on behalf of Bonnie Klein, who is an educator at JGMS. She is unable to attend this evening. Dear School Board, I am a teacher at JGMS and have been here for over 20 years, and I'm representing only myself. I have spent quite a bit of time working with Cliff, both planning and co-teaching a workshop for Ed Camp and attending the Metco Directors Conference and Metco Advocacy Day at the State House. In all the times we have spent together, I have found him to be professional, respectful, and genuinely interested in hearing and validating my contributions. My experiences couldn't be further from anything suggesting gender bias. As you move forward with discussion of his contract extension, I hope you will take into consideration the positive professional experience I and so many others have attained. Not doing so would leave Bedford in a very undesirable position. I strongly believe he deserves our support, and anything else would hurt the future of our district. Thank you, Bonnie Klein.
Hi, my name is Karen Burstein, and I am speaking today about my experiences as a teacher, and I am only representing myself. I have been a 7th grade math teacher at JGMS for the past 18 years, and I have held a role in school leadership for the past 17 years. I am speaking because I was surprised about the claims around Superintendent Trong's leadership. I have worked closely with Cliff in many different circumstances and have always felt he was attentive to the needs of staff. When Cliff first assumed the role of superintendent, he had an open invitation for staff to come to him with feedback on the district. I met with him a number of times related to the math department in JGMS and also regarding issues related to antisemitism. Cliff has always been a sincere listener, who always goes above and beyond to understand the situation. Whenever I spoke to Cliff, I felt heard and respected. I have always found Cliff to be a problem solver, who is often an outside-the-box thinker. He has been a refreshing change for the district. Cliff spent a tremendous amount of time in his first year interviewing staff, parents, and students about the schools. He pursued multiple pathways for improvement based on issues that were flagged after he analyzed the data. For example, our math department was under much scrutiny to make changes based on the feedback Cliff received by many parents during his entry process. Sometimes rigorous improvement plans are difficult for those who are impacted. The follow-up within the math department was challenging, but the process was collaborative, respectful, and productive, and it resulted in positive changes in the middle school. On top of this, Cliff spent a lot of time within the community going on walks with people in Bedford Trails, attending school sporting events, attending school performances, and even going to help out at our school socials. Cliff was everywhere, learning the Bedford way, all while making observations both in and out of the classroom about how to improve the district. After gathering all of this information, he began approaching problems in the district with solutions for improvement. When accusations of antisemitism were brought up to the school committee during public comment, Cliff asked if I would meet with him to share my perspective as a Jewish educator. We discussed issues of antisemitism, racism, and other forms of hate within the district even before the formation of the Bedford Anti-Haden Bias Task Force. He has been as supportive to me as a Jewish teacher and as a member of the school staff. I hold Cliff in high regard, and I have always found him to be inquisitive, interested, professional, and personable. It would be an understatement to say that Cliff has been one of the most invested administrators that I've ever seen. I think it would be a huge loss to the district to lose our superintendent, so I hope we can renew his contract as you had planned in June. Thank you.
We're going to return to online. Return to online public comments.
Misha Shattuck.
Yeah.
Something in the chat. Yeah, he was just saying, right? This is Misha Shattuck.
Misha, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you so much. Good evening to the committee and to the members of Bedford who are there in person. My name is Misha Shattuck, and I am at 56 Wildwood Drive. I am calling in today in support of Cliff as our superintendent. I am the parent of children both at John Glenn Middle School as well as at the Lane School. And over the past couple of years, I have really come to see and appreciate our superintendent as a strong leader and as a leader who has a builder mindset. I see Cliff as a person who is bringing and implementing new ideas. My family moved to Bedford largely in part because of the outstanding schools that we have. I feel really heartened to see members of school leadership. We can see you on Zoom, so we see you there, and to hear the comments of our engaged teaching staff. You know, this is what makes our community special, and I've seen just the incredible direction that our superintendent is taking. I've found Cliff to be approachable, receptive to ideas, and incredibly thoughtful in his approach and discussions with families of, you know, the students who are in our community. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to working with the superintendent, hopefully for many years to come. Thank you so much.
Okay. And then Matthew Black.
Matthew, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Matthew Black, 35 Gould Road. I am also calling in support of the superintendent. I'm a parent of two young children in the school district at Davison Lane Schools. And like the previous caller, we moved to Bedford in large part due to the school district. When Cliff joined, not only did he have an open-door policy, but he really came out into the community to meet many different stakeholders, something that I was very impressed by. I was able to go on one of the walks with him, and in my conversations with him, he was thoughtful, open-minded, and generally considerate of different viewpoints on all the issues we talked about. In my view, he's been transparent, committed to community involvement, and a strong commitment to evidence-based decision-making in all the actions that he's taken. So I believe our district is fortunate to have Cliff as a leader and hope the school committee can consider that in their decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Returning to public comment in the room, Carl Worth.
Hi, I'm Carl Worth from Seven Homestead Circle. I've had four children go through the Bedford Public Schools over the past 20 years, with one graduating from high school last year. And I'm here to present to the school committee and Bedford community a petition in support of Superintendent Trong. The organizers of this petition have children in the Bedford school system and are afraid of being retaliated against by those opposing Superintendent Trong, unfortunately. So I was asked to present, and their fear should concern us all. The petition was signed by 257 Bedford residents, including me. And it states that Superintendent Trong, 1, has demonstrated strong leadership by settling seven major contracts, managing severe budget challenges with integrity, and introducing innovative financial solutions. 2 is a highly visible and engaged leader, building genuine connections with students, staff, and families. And 3 is a leader who listens, values collaboration, and leads with both competence and heart. With permission, I will now attempt to read seven comments from the 115 comments in this petition. All seven are from women. First, a female parent. I support him because he is very involved with the schools. He participates in many school activities, visits classrooms, interacts with students and their parents. He invites the community members to have conversations with him. He is also very supportive to the teachers and spoke a lot to them, for them, during their contract negotiations. 2, another female parent. Mr. Trong has been an effective and empathetic leader, and in my extensive experiences with him, he has displayed outstanding character even in difficult situations. We are lucky to have him. 3, a female student. He is super-involved with the students and makes time to meet and get to know them. Last year, he offered meeting time to meet with club leaders, and he is often around the school and actively participating with student activities to make connections with the students. It's rare for superintendents to be this involved with students and willing to get to know them. 4, another female student. I have seen Superintendent Trong many times at JGMS. He met with the JGMS Student Council and is open to discuss ideas with the kids. 5, a female staff. Out of the four superintendents that I've worked with in Bedford, Superintendent Trong has by far been the most open and accepting. He understands and supports the special education services we provide and advocates for his staff. 6, another female staff. I've worked with our superintendent in various capacities, contract negotiations as a team leader. He has always been open to feedback and dialogue about making the schools and community in our district better. Given he was not an internal hire or previously part of the community, I think he is a great leader for all of the needs of our different schools. He does not have a history here that would allow him to play favors, which may be why there's been pushback as support his contract renewal. And 7, a female community member. Cliff Trong has demonstrated real strength as a superintendent. He has spent a great deal of time learning about the district's strengths and weaknesses. Changes in leadership often meet resistance from administrators who do not welcome new ideas. The budget issues Bedford experienced for special education were not unique to us. He disclosed them, addressed them, and moved forward. Both Bedford Public Schools benefit from a strong superintendent like Cliff Trong. I urge the school committee to renew this contract.
Hello, my name is Yuchen Daszewski, and I live in Tangarason Drive. I've been involved in schools as a parent for the last 13 years, and I will be involved in them for the next nine. I have four children. One of them graduated last year, and last year I had a child in every school in the district. So we have some visibility into what's going on. So that's... I would like to start by thanking the committee because it's a thankless job. And I will not presume to tell you how to do it. Clearly, you know what you're doing much better than I would. So, thank you. Having said that, I would like to give my perspective on the process. Our superintendent was a hard deposition, maybe against him. It is unfortunate. But until investigation, which should be impartial, fair, sorrow... But until investigation, which should be impartial, fair, sorrow, and as private as possible in those circumstances, I don't think it would be appropriate to use that investigation as any basis for any decisions until its full conclusions. So I would like to encourage the committee to consider contract extension outside of that particular unpleasant situation. Should the investigation prove to be, you know, something bad come out, that can be dealt with at the time. But, you know, we're in country, we're hopeful. On a slightly different track, um, I didn't have nearly as much experience with superintendent as some other who spoke here, as I don't work in school. But those interactions which I had with him and my family were positive, professional, and helpful. So I would like to express my support of superintendent and renew his contract. Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who wishes to give a public comment? You could raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll continue with the room. Robin Sewell.
Bob Wrestler, thirty-three Gould Road. I'm a co-chair of the Bedford Hate and Anti-Hate and Bias Task. The opinions shared are my own. I am in support of the school district. I have no side. I have a hard time reconciling rumors I hear with my own direct interactions with Superintendent Chuan. I've known Cliff for almost two years since I emailed him with questions about K twelve plans, and he took me up on a meeting without hesitation. We met several times over the course of the last two years, continuing a productive, collaborative, and at times challenging series of conversations. I've found Cliff to be receptive, inclusive, and a willing problem solver. This is all firsthand. He included hard-to-ask questions involving sensitive topics in the assistant superintendent interviews, leading to, as far as I can tell, a great hire of Dr. Kelly Williamson. I've met with Cliff almost weekly since this school committee established the task force at the end of last school year. In the September school committee meeting, we gave a readout that was well received. One member of the school committee said this is the most important work the district is doing this school year. Surrounding districts are looking at our example. The great progress we've made in a short time is the work of many and a direct result of Cliff's leadership, direction, and ability to listen and pivot and make adjustments to collectively improve our work. Ultimately, the superintendent is an employee of the district, reporting into the school committee. Like any employee, there needs to be oversight and accountability. As a community advocate, I need to work with the school committee and the superintendent, no matter who it is. What I can say is right now, this important work is going well. If the superintendent position is turned over again twice in four years, Bedford may be a bit a district that good candidates will avoid. We cannot put ourselves in a position to be seen as a district that drives good candidates away. Leadership is hard. Change is hard, even good change. Being a leader means making and communicating decisions that may not always be well received by everyone. In my personal experience, I've seen Superintendent Chuan's leadership and decision-making guided by values of critical thinking, both and thinking, pragmatism, and quality. These are values that are good for our district and can lead us into the future. Unless there is real cause determined by private personnel dealings, I would encourage the school committee to extend a standard three-year contract renewal. And if there are performance improvement opportunities, have a formal plan in place to improve those opportunities. And I've encouraged Cliff to accept. Thank you.
Ben Frozner.
Ben Frozner, two Wildwood Drive. Good evening. I'm a parent of a second grader at Davis, a volunteer on the Anti-Hate and Bias Task Force, although I'm speaking only for myself, and I'm Jewish. I'm here to voice support for Cliff's leadership. I've seen Cliff keep students at the center of his focus and foster accountable, inclusive practices. First, he runs a disciplined, transparent process. Agendas arrive in advance, meetings start and end on time, sessions close with clear outcomes and next steps. Materials are written in plain language, so those of us like myself who don't have a public education background can participate in importantly. Those basics create trust and make it easier for families to stay engaged. Second, he listens and then acts. I wasn't on the initial roster. When it became clear, the group didn't fully reflect our community, particularly Jewish voices. Cliff expanded membership and invited me and another community member to join. That change ensured concerns about antisemitism or representative word decisions are shaped, not just acknowledged after the fact. Third, he builds coalitions and need work forward. Our task force includes educators, parents, and community partners. The respectful, evidence-based, and student-first tone he sets helps us collaborate, and when needed, we can challenge each other without turning disagreement into delay. Um, I also want to acknowledge the Title IX complaint. I don't know what the allegations are, only that it processes underway. The existence of these complaints is an athlama to what I've witnessed from Cliff in task force, which includes clear boundaries, encouragement of reporting, and responsiveness. That dissonance is hard to ignore. That's why I support your ongoing thorough, independent investigation to establish facts and ensure accountability. I support Cliff's leadership and any appropriate Title IX safeguards. Um, I saw last week you had approved a one-year extension, so I hope we, uh, use the year well. Um, high transparency and prompt and open responses to new concerns should position the district to all for long-term success. If the investigation's findings support Cliff's continued leadership, I urge you to move forward to a multi-year, uh, renewal to lock instability to the district. My family will be here for years. I want my child and every child to learn with safety, dignity, and belonging. That requires leadership willing to confront antisemitism alongside all forms of bias, to listen across differences, and to show results in public. I've seen those qualities in Cliff's work, and I support the committee's path that preserves both continuity and accountability. Thank you for your time.
Matt Adams.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Matt Adams, fifteen Bon area. So we had sent some questions to the school committee, which they finally responded to, and we just have some follow-up to that. We had asked regarding the investigation, we're concluding before all witnesses are called. And, uh, and why wouldn't all witnesses be called? The school committee responded with, as the committee was not part of the investigation, I will simply say it's not for the best to do that as who they believe they need to interview. It's our understanding right now at this point, twenty witnesses were identified, but only one was called for an interview. So we want to raise that question. Of why more and no further interviews. Now that the vote is not happening and there's more time, will more witnesses be called? School committee's response, it's our understanding that underlying investigation has concluded and will be sent to the independent investigator to make his assessment. We're worried about the lack of depth with that comment right there, because we don't know anything further. Regarding attorney Seiki, I hope I spelled his name right, pronounced his name right, worked for the same firm as the investigating lawyer or attorney, uh, or truly independent in another firm. School committee had responded, who's not affiliated with Stoneman, Chandler, and Millet. Thank you for clarifying that. Still remains confusion about the attorneys from the same firm can be considered independent from one another. Uh, the school committee's response, they believe this issue has been addressed in the state-inspired committee. Parent response, this appears to be an imputed conflict per Rule one dot one oh of the ABA, which states while lawyers are associated in a firm, none of them shall knowingly represent a client when any one of them practicing alone would be prohibited from doing so. Regarding rest of the complainants following that, that do not fall into the Title IX category, how are those being investigated? Who determines those issues not worthy of investigating? If there is toxic workplace or hostile workplace incidents bundled into these complaints, why aren't those being investigated? School committee's response, I cannot speak on those matters, then who is addressing those matters? We would like to know. On the Zoom, they mentioned that retaliation is not allowed, but what me, what means are these complainants and witnesses protected? If they are retaliated against, what is the process they have to go through? Did they file another complaint? It does not seem like this process is set up for any actual protections for the victims. School committee responded with, the process is our, our Title IX policy. And anyone believes there is been retaliation, has been retaliation, you need to bring that forward to the Title IX coordinator. Our parent response is you're asking them to go back to the Title IX coordinator who directly, who reports directly to Cliff, which is concerning. My last question, last thing is what type of decision will be rendered? If the decision maker says that Mr. Chuan is responded, then what happens? Who determines the consequence for his action? Is that school committee or the decision maker? And school committee have response, attorney Seiki will make that determination, whether it is a violation under Title IX. School committee will consider the findings with respect to future votes or action by the committee. One more thing for clarifying that. Thank you for your time.
Tracy Rasher.
I am Tracy Rasher, Rasher Hill, thirty-two, March Grove. We're in the midst of an exceptionally challenging time marked by division and uncertainty. As leaders entrusted with the well-being of our district and our students, you must confront the core issue without the luxury of ignoring uncomfortable truths. At the heart of this matter is one fundamental question you must answer. Can the superintendent effectively work with his supportments? This is not about public perception, likability, or whether he is fulfilling his core job duties. The key issue is whether he can maintain a functional, respectful, working relationship with his team. If that collaboration fails, nothing else can succeed. The situation goes far beyond what is visible in public forums. There's a troubling history, potentially stretching over a year, of dysfunction behind closed doors. The district already investigated, investigated and mediation between the superintendent and staff. And that effort ended in failure. To believe that another attempt at reconciliation will succeed ignores the fact that such efforts have been exhausted and disrespects those affected. Even more alarming are recent reports indicating similar troubling behaviors towards students. To dismiss these courageous students as manipulated or coerced, coerced, insults their bravery and undermines the very principles we should be defending. Imagine how you would want your own child to be treated after standing up after intense pressure and scrutiny. Would you accept their voice being dismissed as merely a pawn? It's unjust that the superintendent used his position and direct community access to send a message on October twenty-fourth, effectively drowning out the voices of those who've come forward with allegations. This imbalance of power and influence is exactly the kind of behavior that must be addressed, not mangled. I ask that you set aside any preconceived loyalties or assumptions and consider the possibility that these complaints are valid. What if this is not a coordinated opposition, but the genuine experience of five individuals? Have you ensured that every allegation has been fully and fairly investigated? That all witnesses have been heard, and those that who can come forward feel safe and supported in their workplace?
Thank you. Ron Yaniv.
Good evening. Vanyan Eve, eighty-seven, Wilsonville. I'm a parent of a recent Bedford High School graduate who is now a college freshman. Another Bedford High School sophomore student and a fourth grader at Lane School. I've experienced in, uh, the Bedford schools and three superintendents firsthand over the past thirteen years. I will begin by saying that I'm uncomfortable with the situation playing out in front of us in the last, in the past several weeks and tonight, but I'll get to that later. I want to speak in support of Superintendent Chuan. Over the past couple of years, I've interacted with him both in the aftermath of October seventh and more recently through the Anti-Hate and Bias Task Force. In every interaction, he's been open, thoughtful, and genuinely focused on making our schools better for all students. What stands out to me is the direction he set for the district. The strategic plan that he led isn't about keeping things running. It's about moving Bedford forward, helping every learner grow, supporting student well-being, and strengthening how the district works as a whole. That's what we need if we want real progress instead of just maintaining the status quo. I understand there are ongoing concerns under confidential professional investigation, and I trust that process. From my experience, Cliff is engaged, listens, and he's working to build something vast in. He's the kind of leader who helped the district move forward. I close with this. I find the way this is all playing out in public, in the public deeply concerning. A Title IX investigation is supposed to be confidential. The public comment process is inherently one-sided. Yet leads to the press coinciding with use of public comment for personal accusations have created exactly the kind of spectacle we see tonight. And now by inviting public comment on legal and personal matters, the school committee is effectively allowing the loudest voices to drown out the quiet majority. This is not how side decisions should be made, should be handled. Thank you.
There's someone virtually, so she, oh. There was a hand up for, oh, it's back up. Brittany, do you, uh, we're going to promote who wishes to give public comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, hi. Um, I am speaking on behalf of a friend who wishes to remain anonymous due to concerns about retaliation. The situation is not just about complaints or investigations. It's about leadership, accountability, and oversight. We reached a crisis point, yet the warning signs have been visible for some time. Last fall, staff took the unusual step of writing directly to this committee because they no longer trusted the superintendent's leadership. In the spring, staff and community members again raised concerns about decision-making, morale, and inexperience, and specifically asked the committee to seek feedback from his direct reports before renewing his contract. I'm wondering if that happened. Since then, five formal staff complaints and reports from three students have been filed. Roughly seventy percent of the women who reported to the superintendent have either, have either left or filed complaints. Extending his contract to twenty twenty-seven now would appear to reward rather than address a serious pattern of fear and instability. The investigation may not, may or may not confirm a Title IX violation, but that misses the broader issue. Repeated leadership problems in a climate of mistrust. Multiple staff members have taken real personal and professional risks to speak up. The courage deserves more than procedural indifference. I urge the committee to pause the automatic contract extension and to restructure HR's reporting line so that it no longer reports directly to the superintendent. Bedford deserves transparent systems that protect staff and students, not leadership structures that protect one individual. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's attending virtually who wishes to give public comment tonight? Seeing none, is there anyone else in the room who wishes to give public comment? If you could raise your hand. Yes.
My name is Flywan Stevens Carter, thirteen Baker Street, not in Bedford. I'm a citizen of, uh, the Commonwealth. I am very familiar with Cliff Chuan, and I have heard, you have heard, um, many, uh, people say that they have engaged with him and have had very positive relationships, et cetera, et cetera. I do, I, um, I was a direct report to Cliff at a time and am currently, um, really, um, he saw something in me and gave me a chance to be a leader. Um, and hopefully, um, I'm making him proud and the rest of the people that we serve. I am very concerned about, uh, children and, uh, and the youth that we have, whether they're in this district or any other district. I think that that is important for, um, think, that is important to be noted. One thing I know about Cliff is that he was an advocate of, uh, a work for about, um, a hundred people about courageous conversation. This is the, uh, work where you engage in difficult conversations about things that are important so that you can have transformative conflict. That means conflict, um, it's not that it's easy, but at the end of the day, the conflict leads to relationships that are better than they were when they started. Because you are willing to address your status, your autonomy, the things that are important to everyone. So I, um, would ask that the people who, um, I believe that Cliff, um, does, and the people who are, feel unheard, um, that it is important for, uh, voices to come together. And at this, and this time, it's important for us to do the hard work. So, and not just kick, move people out when things are hard. It's important to show our children that when difficult things It's important to show our children that when difficult things happen, you can speak up, you can speak out. It may be challenging, but you do the hard work. I think this is an opportunity for Bedford, Bedford Public Schools, its parents, its teachers, and its students, along with Cliff Strong, to do the hard work about, um, building bridges. Everyone said positive things about Cliff. I didn't write anything down, so I'm just speaking from my heart. I didn't come prepared for this. Um, I know Cliff to be, um, he is conscientious. He, uh, has strong values. Um, one of the values we had that we used in our work together is, um, Ujima, which means your problem is my problem. So if the teachers of Bedford, any one of them, whether it's the one, the five, the twenty, or the thirty, have a problem, I believe that Cliff, given the opportunity and the resources, um, could, and the willingness of those who are there could have, um, a transformative, uh, conflict resolution. And I would challenge the citizens of Bedford as well as the school committee to, uh, engage in a courageous conversation.
You're, you're giving to them.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room wishing to provide public comments tonight? We'll leave it open for about thirty seconds. Raise your hand if so.
I sense something quick. One more one.
One.
Can I say something for sure? You know, why don't we close the public comment period and then I'll recognize, um, I'll recognize Sarah.
Definitely need to.
Okay. Um, all right, seeing none, you'll consider this public comment, uh, closed on the agenda. I'm gonna recognize Sarah still, that would be.
Um, I just sincerely want to thank them. I want to thank people who showed up. It's hard to get a sitter and someone to drive to some practice and delegate dinner. I wanna, I, this is what I did today. People, I want to thank the people who spoke. It's a big deal. It takes courage. I would think the school committee, uh, we usually put in about five hours a week, um, for this volunteer position. Sarah here has put in five hours most days before noon for the last several weeks and probably a month. We have all been doing, um, working hard to read everything, to listen to everyone and to learn. Um, Sheila and Angel are taking time out of their paid jobs. Sheila is, is missing part of a, a big meeting tonight. Um, thank you for coming. Angel is in the airport somewhere on the way to a, to a job. I want to thank Cliff and Kelly and the, and the administrative office. I am very empathetic. Nobody wishes to be a public punching bag. I want to thank you for showing up and the work. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item, uh, which is the consent agenda by Superintendent Sean.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, so consent agenda is pretty basic, uh, minutes from our last meeting and, um, the, um, finalization of the policy to allow for a shared representative position for the three volunteer, um, uh, the three non-voting representative positions for our Hanscom, our Metco's community and the student representatives. And, um, I added a, uh, the highlighted phrase that made it clear as the school committee asked that at any one meeting on representative, we seated, if it was shared, to make sure that there were, or the discussion. Um, so that is the two items I sent up there.
Thank you. All items from the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee server requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normalcy terms. To go around and see if anyone would like to, uh, initiate a separate discussion. Yeah.
No.
Angel.
No additional questions. Thank you.
Sheila.
No additional questions. Thank you.
Sarah, Brad.
No.
And I don't have any as well. Uh, may I hear a motion that the school committee approved the consent agenda as presented, including the minutes from October fourteen, twenty twenty-five, policy revision seconded, filed B B B two, handsome air force base representation on the Bedford School Committee, filed B B B three, Bedford Metco Representation on the Bedford School Committee, and filed B B B four, Student Representation on the Bedford School Committee.
So moved.
Brad has, Brad Morrison, who's there for the second half, roll call vote, Angel.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Sarah. Yeah, Brad.
Yes.
I mean, yes, five zero zero to move. All right, our next agenda item is the fiscal year twenty-seven budget introduction enrollment projections. And that's Superintendent Sean and Director of Finance, Clay Crane.
Uh, so this is our main agenda item for tonight. This kicks off the process for the FY twenty-seven budget. Welcome, uh, Director Crane, um, to join. I'll give you a high level overview. Let me just make sure I can share the screen so people on Zoom can see it. Uh, there is a memo that outlined all this information, but for the public, um, we're gonna share that, um, and it'll be posted as, as is our practice tomorrow morning. Um, so we're gonna cover the budget development goals and the strategic context we're working in, the budget environment and challenges, enrollment changes that happened this year, and then enrollment projections for next year, and then next steps. Uh, so just a reminder that in our strategic plan, um, in the third objective of around strengthening teams and systems, we have a specific objective around the fiscal systems, which includes two, um, outcomes, mission aligned resource allocation and balanced budgets, budgets with no untimely surprises. We are beginning the process for fiscal twenty-seven to ensure there are no untimely surprises. And in the coming weeks, you will get a lot more information. Uh, but we're starting tonight with the context. Um, we're not gonna be talking specific budgetary numbers yet. Um, we're focusing on enrollment. Um, as articulated in the memo and also shared with staff, there are four primary goals that are guiding the process. Um, we are doing our very best, best to adhere to three point five percent, um, guidelines set by the finance committee. We are gonna meet our employee contract obligations, which are substantial, given the contract that we settled in the last year and two. Um, we are going to prioritize the strategic plan initiatives outlined in that plan. And then lastly, we are going to make sure we allocate resources equitably across the schools using, uh, class size and case load guidelines that I will be sharing with this committee, uh, next, uh, meeting. Uh, those guidelines are based on some historical practice, but we work as a team to identify and clarify, um, other practices that may not have been as clearly outlined in order to make sure there is a database and evidence based, um, tool in order to provide resource allocation decisions. Um, so as was referenced actually earlier tonight, we, there's important things to keep in context, um, in mind. Um, we have, um, this year, all labor contracts are settled. So that is a luxury in terms of certainty around, um, not having to predict, um, what those, uh, salary of cost pressures might be. So however, the certainty is that we have historic, um, wage increases, um, as we adjusted to make sure that we can attract and retain our workforce. You may recall that last year, the maintenance of effort, um, in order to keep level services and the staffing that we currently have was around seven percent. We are still in a seven percent increase year over year. We, uh, uh, anticipate that we're still working on the numbers, but that we're looking at something in the same order since we are in the third year of the historic teacher's contract. You may also recall that we funded the fiscal twenty-six budget, budget that we're in right now, uh, with a five percent increase from the town, uh, which required a million dollars of reductions to achieve. The prior year, if you recall, we, uh, were funded at a six percent level, um, in anticipation of, uh, wage adjustment for the teacher's contract and because of our investments in literacy that we made that, um, uh, that following year. Um, so we expect, uh, again, working on the numbers now that the cost escalations will be in a similar range of order magnitude. And because we are committed to coming in at a three point five percent, um, uh, finance committee guideline, this is going to require, um, strategic, thoughtful, creative resource allocation. Um, I do want to flag publicly for the committee and for the community that, uh, difficult decisions are likely related to staffing, class sizes, operating expenses. Everything needs to be on the table, um, in order to, we remain fiscally stable and, um, sustainable. This is in light of an enrollment context that is coming to fruition and we have signaled for during my tenure, which is we, like many other towns, are in a declining enrollment situation. This presents the year over year change in enrollment, um, which is even lower than we had projected. Um, via, uh, the total decrease in enrollment was a hundred and eleven students from last year to this year, which is a four point four percent decrease in enrollments. Um, our projections and the projections of our third party, um, uh, analytic analytical firm, NASDAQ, um, were pretty close. Um, but we both, um, uh, they, they sort of came in, uh, a little high, a little lower than we did, right? Uh, we were both pretty close though. Um, so, uh, we, we know that we are, um, sort of in range of, of the expectation of, of the decline. You can see though that our, um, uh, oh, that was, that's a K twelve. Yeah. So the one thing that I, my brain has to keep adjusting is that NASDAQ does not have pre-K. Pre-K is not, um, part of the, um, standard public school enrollment. So when you look at just K through twelve, our, our projections are pretty close, um, to NASDAQ and to what actually occurred. There's also a regional context to keep in mind. There was a study that was just released about enrollment, um, across the region, uh, inclusive, uh, post pandemic. And the pattern that we're seeing here in Bedford mirrors those of some surrounding communities that, um, we are compared to often, um, including Concord, Lexington, Lincoln. And it reflects a broader post pandemic shift across the state. So I'm gonna share two maps. Um, this is a map of the actual fall two thousand twenty-four, so not this year, but last year enrollment compared to the year of the pandemic, before the pandemic, the fall of two thousand nineteen. Um, anything in red is, um, a significant decline in enrollment. Orange is a some decrease, yellow is a small decrease, and then greens are small increases. You can see that I circled, um, with, uh, online, uh, with some online drawing tool in blue, Bedford, which is in orange. Uh, and you look around us and everything around us to the west and the south is, um, in orange. To the east is Bill Rickon. Um, and I think to the northwest, actually, I should not guess what that green is, but the, the communities that are to our, our west and south, those that who conquer Lexington, um, Lincoln are also in this, um, some decrease of three to three to eight percent. But even more telling is that the actual decrease was larger than the trend would have, um, predicted. So if it's red on this chart, it means that the decrease was actually larger, um, compared to the trend. So you can see that, um, where red, um, we had a larger decrease. Um, not sure exactly what the factors are, but as we've talked about at some length of this committee, uh, the birth rates are lower and have remained lower. And that again is a regional baseline and national phenomenon. Um, so that's the regional context in terms of declining enrollment. Um, uh, we are in a part of the state that, um, you know, the type of community that, um, is going to see, um, continued decline. Uh, so our projected K twelve and wrong for next year, um, is fifty students lower, another two percent lower at twenty-three hundred. You can see that the last time we had a cohort that was more than a hundred sixty students was, um, in the pandemic, uh, the year of the pandemic. We have a final large bubble class that is in grade nine. And the prior largest class there was sort of classified to, um, uh, these, these larger sizes. But those are, uh, as you'll see in the next graphics, um, no longer the trend. Right now, enrollment is beginning to stabilize at the elementary level. Um, we have seen declining enrollment through the elementary. It is about to hit the middle school next year. And then it will progress through the middle and the high school systematically unless something dramatic changes around the demographic factors driving this change uh, for the next six years. Uh, we talked about that last year. Here is the current NASDAQ projection. And you can see graphically that the dark green at the bottom, which is elementary, has experienced decline and is starting to stabilize because the last bubble class is in fifth grade right now. So you can see relatively stable enrollment in dark green, below a thousand students, actually below nine hundred students. And then you can see, uh, in light blue and in light green, the gradual decline year over year over year of the middle school and the high school as this declining enrollment trend, um, moves up and the class sizes are, um, closer to one fifty or lower than two hundred.
Those are, those are NASDAQ.
Those are NASDAQ projection.
For Bedford, yeah.
For Bedford. And you can see that even between this year and last year, NASDAQ, um, uh, our projection and NASDAQ's projection are pretty close, uh, to twenty-three, it's off by one kick. So we've been tracking, we do, Julie does independent sort of, um, enrollment analysis for using NASDAQ as an additional source, um, as a third party sort of check. So again, some highlights between FY ten and FY twenty, we saw growth of about ten point seven percent of enrollment. You might, I, I, I wasn't here, but there was a expansion, I think, at Davis and at maybe DA MS to accommodate through some of that increase. Um, schools, at all schools, okay, yeah. Um, and then we hit our high watermark that year of the pandemic in FY twenty. But you can see now that we're in a rapidly accelerating decline. Um, where we will be at, we're twenty-four hundred this year, twenty-three hundred next year, and the twenty-two hundreds the following year. Um, and it's important to note that NASDAQ's current projection fiscal twenty-eight of twenty-two sixty-eight is already lower than their last year projection for the same year by, you know, roughly fifty students or forty students. So, um, we had suggested that we need to be very careful about, um, assuming enrollment. And we're not seeing any, um, bounce back or any data to suggest that, um, there is going to be, um, any sort of decrease into decline. Um, and this is, um, the overall number starting with this, uh, year, this is K twelve, so twenty-three fifty and K twelve. And you can see that we're on track to be a two thousand student district instead of a twenty-five hundred student district in the next six years. Um, so, uh, this decline is steady and consistent with the experience that we've had since COVID. Um, driven again largely by birth data that NASDAQ tracks. People are just not having as many, um, babies as they did before for a whole host of reasons, probably. So what does that mean? That means in the coming weeks, in order to be fiscally sustainable, we will, um, uh, need to present a budget that is, um, doesn't increase as much as they have in the past two years. And we are committed to what we, uh, said last year. We will do our very, very best to avoid staff reductions that disrupt student programming or destabilize staff team structures. You heard me say that a lot last year. That was part of the structure for the tiered approach to budget. And we will again be as clear as we can about when the potential programmatic disruption might be, just given that this reduction had to occur. Um, or what the potential disruptions to staff team structures are. Um, they are in that order. Um, we as a team are going to prioritize, um, protecting student programming first and foremost, but we will do our darndest to also protect the stabilizing staff team structure because that's also not good for students. But that does mean that, um, people need to have very modest expectations of our ability to make additional new investments in FY twenty-six, particularly beyond anything articulated in strategic plan. And, um, that we are going to need to, uh, have those hard conversations collaboratively in order to make sure that we can make in the high level of, of educational excellence that this community expects and deserves. So in terms of next steps. So in terms of next steps, the leadership team this morning had a three hour meeting to begin prioritize sort of what the possibilities are. We are starting with trying to be strategically strategically capitalize on vacancies. Vacancies that emerge in terms of retirements, resignations and departures. If you can not that fill a vacancy, that is less disruptive than if you have to reduce a position with an actual below the staff member in it. So we are working through that process as we said last year. We are following up on some of the things that I asked for you to support the larger budget last year to delay. With destabilizing the team structure, but we I'm asking the team to work now to capitalize on those things that we projected would happen this year. And that we have the natural advantage of that natural attrition. So that is the first and foremost. Our goal is to try to take advantage of that as much as possible. But we are also prioritizing the needs. We had a open process for anyone on staff to work with the leadership team member to propose what student student needs might need to be. We've collated collective donors are in the process of vetting and determining a priority decision order in alignment with the strategic plan. That's the documenting the current unfunded needs. And then we will be collaborating on to with the school permitting and the finance committee throughout this process. You may recall that we are still on the very rapid timeline that is dictated by the current town meeting date and structure, although I understand that that. May no longer be the case starting in two thousand twenty seven. But right now we are working under the same constrained timeline as last year, which. I want to thank and advance the team because it's, you know, we were just, you might recall the last meeting, we were just talking about how we started fiscal twenty six and how we're doing, and we're already planning fiscal twenty seven. With not actually very full visibility into the salary data for fiscal twenty six. So what does that look like in terms of the next steps? At your next meeting scheduled on November thirteenth, we will preview some more information about the budget process, particularly around class size. And caseload guidelines that will guide some of these difficult conversations. We will then give a preview to the finance committee the following week. And then on November twenty fifth, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. I will present the full proposed budget with the preliminary budget. With a three point five percent increase, but I will be I will likely be providing tiers as I did last year in terms of. This is what happens if you want to be three point five, if you want to protect this, it would be this. So we will be sure to provide a series of options. In term and be very clear about the impact on student programming and staff team structures. But as you can see, we are to be fiscally responsible for the tax barriers Bedford. We need to make sure that we address the decline in the moment smartly and and again ideally gradually over time. And that is it. Julie and Derek, two questions.
Are you able to put the speakers? I guess yes. All right, we're not voting anything, but we will go around for questions, starting with you, Kim.
Um, I don't have any questions per se. This was really interesting and I. Like that you showed so many of the visuals and graphics. I do think that that helps to put things in context, so hopefully we can do more of that going forward. But yeah, no questions for me at this time.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim. Angel.
Sometimes I wish these things came out with like better news right off the bat, but you know. I just want to remind folks that. You know, a lot of what we did last year and kind of knew some of this is coming for this year, right? So to keep that in mind as. Budget process develops itself. You know, we're going to try our darndest, you know, as we as if I have any partners. To just get to where the finance committee wants us, but again. To be gracious about what that means rather than what that looks like. For the district and for the, you know, everybody that's there. So that's all I got for now. I don't have any other specific questions.
Thanks, Angel. Sheila.
Yeah, thanks. No specific questions, but Cliff, thanks for the preview onto this. Thanks for backing it up with the data. So we can just sort of see where the projections are. Agreed. We did a lot of this work last year in planning for. FY twenty six and FY twenty seven. So agree, look forward to the process where we can. Do our best to make decisions based on the data from a budget perspective enrollment and figure out how to best keep all of our programs. And supporting our teachers and everything that we we would like to have in the district to the best of our ability. So thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. Derek.
I don't have any questions. This enrollment data is always fascinating to me. Yeah. I'm I'm. Excited to problem solve and how we can do this well, to shift this well.
Brad.
Yes, I have two questions. Cliff, I heard you refer to post pandemic shifts. And I'm curious, is that just something that happened since the year twenty twenty? Or is there something related to the pandemic that we think is underlying this shift? Why why are they related post pandemic other than the date?
The study that would release, that's how they framed it, but I do think. I don't know, like the pandemic, I think also shifted. Patterns around. Babies in in.
Not about choosing public versus private schools or any other kinds of things like that.
I think there's a little bit of that too. I don't think there's a lot of evidence. I I hadn't looked at the data closely, but I think we've mentioned before that there isn't. There wasn't some sort of mass exodus from Bedford Public. This is very much, I'll ask Julie to comment, very much driven by birth data.
Okay.
Yes, so demographics are important. The other. Thing that I would encourage folks to keep an eye on would be real estate transactions. Obviously, we've come from a period of extremely high inflation in into climbing interest rate environment. And it's just very unpredictable, but I do think the sort of. Birth data is only one piece of the puzzle. The other piece, which is very significant, is is. In migration, you know, people moving into town after their children are born, seeking seeking schools generally. So that is a huge factor that was very much disrupted by what everyone went through in twenty twenty. And the years after. So it's complicated, but demographics. Residency, homeownership, all those pieces are very big and. It's not just private school enrollment, but we have seen a slight uptick in home schooling and a slight uptick in, not surprisingly, the virtual academies.
So do you have any predictions? I mean, there's a whole bunch of condos that are being built. Still, they're not affordable by any means. Is there, there's, it's hard to tell.
So. I I participated in a number of sort of impact studies, both in Bedford. A couple and and other communities where where you really study what is what's going to be the impact. Now Bedford has had a couple big developments, particularly, say, the Avalon development, which. Which we know how the students that have, you know, lived there and come from there and a couple other apartment complexes in town. You'd really need something of that size. Yeah, and nothing lately that's been approved has been anywhere close to that kind of a size to be able to really impact. So. That would be my comment about that. We did also include some references about. About sort of. The the people like to say, what about the condos? They can easily overstate it, both if they're worried about crowding in schools and also declining enrollment. So there's been a lot of research that. That it is other factors versus and not so much development, housing development. It's not, it takes a long time to plan, get permitted and build, gets takes a long time to become fully occupied once it's there. And so it's complicated.
So it might dribble in a little bit, you're saying, but not it won't impact it yet.
Not unless there's something approved that's a two fifty, three hundred units type of. Yeah.
My other question, maybe this is few Julie. I I want to use the word revenue because of my private sector background, but I'm interested in the revenue implications of declining enrollment. So I guess it's state funding and other things like that. So could you kind of give us a quick review of that?
So, yeah, you know, dollars certainly follow the enrollment. It's never a happy situation.
Is it? What's the timing of it? Is it? Do we get the money the same year that we have the alert? So like, how does that work?
Yeah, it's 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 basically the October one enrollments. And the the chapter seventy formula is, you know, complicated. There is a whole harmless provision, but also Bedford is not super reliant on chapter seventy.
Okay.
So really, the the bulk of the support will come from property taxes.
Okay. Okay, that's that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Brad. I do have one question and a touch on it, Julie. Have there been any statistically relevant changes in our Hanscom Mermet goes through the populations?
Those have been pretty stable, both applications. So there there was that, that's what we hope for stability there. So in the, you know, I haven't seen any great big shifts of, let's say, plus or minus ten students.
My my questions were addressed by Brad, so I have nothing else at this point, so.
I just have one other comment on this topic, which is. It is easier to over prepare and then not have to do hard things than it is to hope that the the declining enrollment will happen and then have to suddenly do the hard things. So that is the, until we get actual data that. Gives us some sense that there's going to be a shift in this enrollment pattern, I am asking the team to think multiple years out in terms of structure. To be sure that we don't destabilize either student programming or the teams. And if we don't have to do it because we end up with more kids, that would be great. But we'd rather be prepared and not have to do it than to cross our fingers and then have to make some decisions that are more subtle. So that's the 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 charge of the team, which is let's look multiple years ahead. We know that the middle school will be the size of Lane three years from now. What should the structure of teams at the middle school look like? And we have some very viable options that we think can keep us on track to what we've committed to in terms of the middle school team structure and then the same conversation with the high school. Around, you know, you have a little bit more time. And but let's plan ahead, right?
Thank you. Thank you for that forward thinking approach. Moving on, our next agenda item is the superintendent report with High Superintendent Shwan.
So to wrap up the evening, just had a few things to update you and the community on. I saw many of you on Sunday at the dedication for Mike Rosenberg's press box. I think it was a fitting way to capture the whole series of renovations for the track and field. The bathroom, I know, is still not quite done, but it was wonderful to to recognize the pillar, the pillar of the community. With that dedication, knowing that that would be put to good use as our athletic teams continue to. Use that field. I I don't actually, I wish we had our student who could give us some more update. I know we have a lot of teams and doing very well and grateful to the citizen for covering that. So. Look at the citizens and see how our team are doing.
I think. This week, last week and this week were the end of the seasons for most of the.
We're in playoffs, though.
Yeah, and just today, they like field hockey dropped, the bracket dropped today. We're all on pins and needles.
Also Saturday.
Eleven AM. Yeah, yeah, we all. And so it's all, yeah, there's no news now. So we're right in that transition.
Yeah, so keep an eye on the citizen. They they cover that well. I just also wanted to give two brief updates on the task force and the working group I I'm quite committed to, thank you for the sort of extension into November, more robust. Updates, but we will be conducting our an all day PD. The next Tuesday, Election Day is traditionally in Bedford at full staff professional development day. The J G M S staff, many of whom you heard from tonight, will be receiving a first training on understanding Jewish identity and identifying antisemitism from. This to for tricking the sciences. That is that I have to say there was a robust process with the subcommittee that is led by Dr. Williamson and Akil Mondeser around. Who we would partner with on the teaching of antisemitism. A lot of robust conversation because there are a lot of organizations out there, but I think we landed on a organization that addressed our educational needs and. Didn't raise other concerns. So we're looking forward to the partnership with I C S. And we are also going to be rolling out our. A draft of the new hate and bias incident protocol. I led with John Artunian, the other subcommittee on incident response. And I have to say that the the feedback from that subcommittee and other members who just voluntarily also reviewed it was. Super helpful, super robust. A great process in terms of making something we we thought out and started with a base from neighboring districts who we credit in the acknowledgements, but I think our protocol is. Even better because of the robust feedback and the diverse perspective that we got from the subcommittee. So we will be. That will likely be integrated formally into the district handbook by the end of the year, which is part of which is kind of a consistent. Protocol for everything, policy and procedure wise, but we will be working with the J G M S staff. To roll it out on November fourth, and then we'll probably ask the other schools to begin using it once we work with it at J G M S for a couple of months. And we'll give a full update in November. With respect to the healthy school hours working group, we've had a number of robust meetings as well. Again, a lot of diverse perspectives, some parent participation. I think I see. Then from there. Julie, our partners at Bedford Charter, our partners at REC Athletics, our athletic director, one representative for each of the schools. And we do, and of course.
And one teacher.
Yeah. Liz Holder, again, representing the union who has a separate joint labor management committee that meets with Liz and me on occasion to flag the. Ongoing the potential implications for collective bargaining. I have to say and acknowledge the union's partnership in this in terms of being very open minded around out of box solutions and Liz in particular presenting some other options. For us to consider. So we do believe we're on track in November to present the implementation plan that is promised in the resolution. We'll we'll sort of share the pros and the cons and the challenges around each there. No, no option is perfect. But we will get feedback from you also that we spend our time focused on the option that seems like it's. The most viable for making the shift with the least disruption and the most benefit. I also Chief Fisher is in the room. Thank you. We have good news in that we have two candidates for the crossing guard position. So we are hoping to relieve the the police officers who have been covering that very consistently since the the need was identified. So thank you to Chief Fisher and the police department for that help and fingers crossed that we can identify a crossing guard who can. Join alongside Lori in the mornings to greet and keep her kids safe. And then last, I wanted to note that I've had the pleasure of beginning learning walks and joining our assistant superintendent, Dr. Williamson on learning walk. She's in every school every week. And already beginning of being able to sort of identify trends in her entry process that. Makes me feel better that they seem to align with what I've been identifying, but now. We have a structure in place and we're going to begin the formal instructional rounds, the phase two of instructional rounds that Kelly will be leading. A more formal observations with a larger team that beginning November. So. It's just a privilege and a pleasure to see what is happening in our classrooms. Great instruction, thoughtful lessons, engaged students. I wish I could do more. But glad to to have that process underway and you will hear more about that in the coming months. Was it?
Thank you. We'll go around if anyone has any questions. Kim?
No questions, but do you want to shout out the cheer team as well? They did a really good job at their first exhibition last weekend and have a lot of other competitions coming up. So want to make sure you don't get lost in the mix.
Actually, I have one other. Kim's reminded me of one other maybe less fun news. So we did get word that because of the federal shutdown. We believe that those who are receiving food assistance, that assistance will cut off on November first. We will be sharing more information about it. I've already worked with Brian Chels at the high school to get the word out for Hansman family. I think active duty is still getting paid, but other federal employees are not. So I wanted to share and make sure everyone in the community is aware that our bank here in Bedford has already received a significant uptick in folks who need the support. So it's in the town manager's newsletter and I, again, we're going to push information out too. But if you, the the food bank could use support as we support our colleagues and friends at Hanscom. And others who rely on that food assistance, so that is something we learned today. My understanding is it will not impact sort of the free breakfast and lunch at the schools, at least in the short term. But those who receive those benefits. That is a shift that is occurring next week, so or end of this week. So just applaud for supporting our our friends at Hanscom.
Thank you. Angel, would you like to add anything?
Nothing specific to add, but just a quick kudos for our. Crossing the fingers for the crossing guards, no unintended. That's all, so thank you.
Sheila.
Uh, no questions. Thank you for the update, Cliff.
There, I had snack on my face for making for that update. That was good. I was worried about that too. So I think that the food bank. Has a big fundraiser, the Thanksgiving Day Walk Run. Which I can plug here, it's in the morning of Thanksgiving Day. It's a good way of supporting them. And I'm sure they need more, but yeah, it's a good one, good place to start.
No questions, bring us the cross.
Same, I have no questions. Thank you, Chief Fisher, and thank you for the update. So. Do you have no questions? Would anyone on the committee like to add anything or bring up anything we have not already discussed this evening for future?
Anybody wants a paddle for?
From Sally, Sally. All right. If there is no further business under the open session agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
So moved.
Second. Brad has moved, Sarah seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I have it. This meeting is adjourned at nine oh six PM. Thank you, everyone.